Check one, two. Can we do a quick sound check? Mr. Vecchio, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear everybody.
Yes.
I can hear. Yep.
I'd like to call on order today's board meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, so if we can note on the roll call that Joe is online and Jay couldn't make it tonight, but everybody else is here. I do need to get a motion from somebody. We had to make an amendment to the agenda tonight to add two particular pieces, items for the personnel. So I need someone to make-
Just say what they are.
Oh, they are nine point seven-
You're adding two people.
Right, we're adding two people. It's right here. We're adding-
So, so for everybody in the room and at home, we amended the agenda to include two new hires in item nine point seven, Catherine Bussinger and Jaclyn Fulmer. They are listed in, they're highlighted in maroon. So that is to change the agenda. They're now, we're asking for a motion and a second to accept the amended agenda.
I'll make the motion to amend the agenda.
I have a motion and a second to approve the motion to amend the agenda to add the two new people for personnel. Do I have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion, agenda. Back to the beginning. First of all, welcome everybody to a new school year. It was like, we were literally, what, we were going like a month? It went so fast. Man, this stunk. All right, we're back. All right, so for executive session announcements, we did have two executive sessions during the timeframe from our two board meetings, one on June 28th, one on July 13th. Both were just to discuss personnel. And we're going to move on to public comment. First, do I have anybody in here that would like to give public comment? I didn't get any slips. Seeing none. Do we have anybody online for public comment? All right, so we're going to move on to approval of the minutes, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve approval of minutes four point one and four point two.
I have a motion and a second to approve both four point one, four point two, approval of the minutes. So I have any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? Motion pass. Oh, all those opposed? No. Motion passes. Receiving the accounts, please.
I move that we accept the high school, middle school, and cafeteria counts as presented.
I hear a motion and a second to approve the receiving of the accounts for audit. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Granting of the orders.
I move that we approve the payments of invoices in the amount of eight million, six hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixty-six cents for June 2022 as presented.
I hear a motion and a second to approve the orders, granting of orders for June's bills. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I move that we approve the payments of invoices in the amount of four million, one hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifteen cents for July 2022 as presented.
I have a motion and a second to approve the granting of orders for July to pay our bills. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Reporter, the superintendent? Still got Treasury report.
I have one more. I move that we approve the Treasury report for June 2022 and July 2022 as presented and file it for audit.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Treasury report. Do we have any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Reporter, the superintendent?
I think we missed the monthly board action.
No, we did that right in the beginning.
Oh, we did it? Okay, somehow then I missed it. I apologize.
Patty, Patty, Patty made the motion and Tina and over here, both two people.
Good evening. I have two items to share this evening. First, Act 55, School Safety and Security Grant. There's new legislation that includes new school safety and security provisions, including funding of nearly three hundred thousand dollars, split equally between school safety and security provisions. The legislation also includes new mandates for training and assessments. We will be applying for these grants during the month of August, and the grants will be used during this and the following school year. Also, I am very excited. Opening day is August 24th, and that will be our first day of school, just over two weeks away. We are very excited to get the school year started and looking forward to a great year. Athletes, our football players started early this week, and the rest of our athletes and our musicians will start next week. Students, there are still opportunities to sign up. We have a very strong representation by our student athletes and student musicians, but there is still room for you. So please, if you're interested, reach out to our Director of Athletics and Co-Corricular Activities, Mr. Steve Onsbuck. And that's all I have.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the action items personnel, nine point one.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve nine point one along with nine point two.
I have a motion and a second to approve nine point one, nine point two. Do I have any comments or questions?
I do have a couple of comments. These are our senior administrators that have left to go on different ventures, and we just wish them the best of luck in their new adventure, in their new chapter in their life, and thank them for all they've done for Potts Grove.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, nine point three.
I'll make a motion to approve nine point three.
I have a motion and a second to approve nine point three, the administrative appointments. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Wait, can I hear Joe? Was it, did you have a question?
It was a yes. I'm sorry. No, it was a yes, that's all. I apologize for the lateness.
No problem. Motion passes. Congratulations to all those here. I know Danielle's here. We're going to move on to nine point four.
I'll make a motion that we approve nine point four.
I have a motion and a second to approve nine point four, the retirement. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, nine point five.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve nine point five through nine point eight.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve nine point five through nine point eight. Do we have any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Let's move to nine point nine.
I'll make a motion, we approve nine point nine.
I have a motion and a second to approve nine point nine. Any comments or questions?
Just a comment again. Once again, we would like to wish the retirees the best in their retirement and thank them for their time at Potts Grove.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, nine point eleven.
I would like to make a motion, we approve nine point ten through nine point fourteen.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve nine point ten through nine point, you said fourteen or thirteen?
Fourteen.
Fourteen. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, nine point fifteen.
I will be abstaining from this, nine point fifteen. My husband's a coach.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Agenda Item nine point fifteen.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve nine point fifteen. Do we have any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, we have one abstention, just to put it down for the record. Everybody else approved. Moving on to nine point sixteen.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve nine point sixteen through nine point seventeen.
I have a motion. I need a second. Second, yeah. All right, I have a motion and a second to approve nine point sixteen and seventeen. Do we have any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, nine point eighteen.
I'd like to make a motion that we do approve nine point eighteen.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve nine point eighteen. Any comments or questions?
Comment. I would just like to congratulate all the teachers that have reached their tenure. That's a great accomplishment.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to action items business.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve ten point one alone by itself.
I have a motion to approve the ten point one budget transfers. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to ten point two, school bus bid award.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve ten point two.
I have a motion and a second to approve the school bus bid. Any have any comments or questions?
If we could recap this a little bit, recap this, the ten point two, the school bus bid.
We solicited bids for two, four school buses. We asked for two seventy-two passenger buses and two sixteen passenger buses. We received bids from two vendors and no bids on the sixteen passenger buses. So the reasons is, the vendors told me GMC, who makes the chassis for the sixteen and twenty-four passenger buses, have refocused their attention elsewhere for the time being, and Ford, who makes the chassis for the transit vans, also has suspended making them for a little bit and focusing their attentions elsewhere. So school buses, small school buses are coming hard to find now. Supposedly the vendor has the buses on the lot. I don't know if they're still there now, but, but the vendor still has the buses in the lot.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions about the, the five hundred dollars apiece-
Yes.
-that we're receiving for these extremely large, expensive buses. I believe it was right before the pandemic, we had this conversation-
Yes, and we did attempt to sell. They were sold, but no one's paid for them yet.
What's that?
We put them up for auction, the old buses, but no one's paid for them yet.
No one's paid for them yet?
Yes. There have been, the auctions closed, there's winning bidders, but they haven't come forward to pay for the vehicles yet. And that was closed over a month ago.
Okay. So how much do we get for them at auction, even though we don't have the money in?
According to this, two nine, one nine passenger van went for thirty-eight hundred dollars, another nine passenger van went for twenty-six hundred dollars, a fourteen passenger wheelchair sold for sixteen hundred dollars, a twenty-four passenger bus sold for two thousand, another twenty-four passenger bus sold for fifteen fifty. I also searched the site for large buses, and the current bids are only two hundred bucks.
Okay. Does the auction house guarantee this at all?
No, they don't. If the person doesn't come through, they're essentially precluded from bidding on the site ever again. That's the consequence.
Was it the same corporation or something that bought them all?
No, they're different people.
So all these different people went in and bid and nobody's paid yet?
No, we've only gotten one paid.
Okay.
And I have to reach out to the site to see what's the ramification for those people, so I can go and try to rebid them or go to the next bidder.
Right. Well, now they're two years older.
Mm-hmm. Well, they just went out to bid last month.
Was that because of the pandemic?
That's because of the pandemic, because it was never gotten around to getting done.
Okay. All right. That aside, I hope we get our money, because that is, if we do, that is quite a bit more than the pittance that-
I understand, but I even checked large buses currently on the bid, and they're not even exceeding five hundred dollars yet.
Okay, so I actually did a really quick search, just literally Facebook Marketplace.
Well, we can't use Facebook.
I'm not saying you can. I was just using that as a basis. I don't know what year the buses are that we were, that we're trading in, or how many miles. Do you know?
They're about seventeen years old, and they have about a hundred and fifty thousand miles on them.
Okay. That's pretty low mileage for a diesel. Diesel engines can go a million miles.
I understand that.
Now granted, a little more wear and tear because it's a school bus, and it's stopping and going.
We can attempt to sell them if that's what you want. That's not a problem.
I just wanted to point out that, like, we're buying from Wolfington, right?
That's the recommendation, yes.
Okay. So Wolfington had a 2017, granted, much newer than what we'd be selling, seventy-two passenger with sixty-two thousand miles on it, selling for seventy thousand dollars. And I know we wouldn't be able to get that, but talking to both my husband and my son, who are both in the automotive industry, and my husband's been in the automotive industry for thirty-five years, as soon as I said five hundred dollars, he, he, literally, he looked around, he goes, "Are you kidding me?" And I said, "No." He said, "The engine and transmission alone on something like that has to be worth at least probably three, four, five times more." That's just the engine and the transmission. I know you're not in the business to sell engines and transmissions, and neither is the school. But what I'm pointing out is that Wolfington is, they're cheating us a great deal by giving us five hundred dollars per passenger, per seventy-two passenger bus. Right now, the trend, one of, a very popular trend is to buy buses, old buses, fix them up, and people are turning them into campers. My husband actually said, "Well, can we buy it for five hundred dollars and I'll turn it into a camper?" And I said, "Absolutely not." So, just so you know. So I just think that even though the auction, I know they're two years older and it might have been a little work, I don't accept five hundred dollars for something where just a few of the parts, I mean, the engine is a lot of parts, and the transmission obviously has a lot to do with it, but scrap alone, they could get more than that, you know? And especially now with the way parts, auto parts are few and far between often. So the scrap yards are getting a lot more for these parts because the auto repair places are having a hard time getting them. So that's probably my ten cents, not my two cents, so.
Mark, will parliamentary procedure rise, what, if it's the board's will that we explore a sale of this outside of a trade, how would we handle that?
This was an alternate. The board does not have to accept the alternate bid.
You could do it one of two ways. You could either have a motion to amend, and then we vote on the motion to amend. We go back to the underlying motion, where the easier way, I always think, is if whoever made the motion would withdraw it. We'll just have a new motion if that's the will of the board.
Wait one second, I'm just getting a little confused here. We had the buses out for bid, and now you're questioning whether it was the right amount that we would be getting for it?
Now, now she's questioning the trades.
The trades, okay, the trade. Okay, okay. So what is the motion that's on the table, and what's the motion we have to amend?
The motion that's on the floor now would be to award the bid for, sorry, award the bid for the two hundred and twenty thousand dollars with a one thousand dollar trade credit. Ashley's suggesting that we just award the bid for two twenty and try to sell the trade in, you know, some other way.
Right, there's got to be-
Try to find a way to get more than a thousand dollars.
Ron, do they change the price at all, if they don't get a trade in? Do you know?
No, the price is the price.
Okay.
That was one of my questions. And then the other one was, I think I heard you mention that we had, you had put four vehicles on the auction, and you've got two built in. Did you just take the two worst of the, of the bunch and then-
Let me see if I can get the phrasing correctly. Correct me if I'm wrong. I move we amend the motion. Okay.
Tina's got a question yet from Tina. Hold on real quick, let her ask the question, then we'll do the amendments.
Okay.
Your question is, I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
I think I had heard you say that you had put four vehicles on the auction site.
Yeah, we, well, no, we haven't put anything on the auction site yet. We're trying to replace four vehicles.
Okay, you're trying to replace four.
Yeah, only two now can only get replaced. We have to hang on to the sixteen passenger buses another year until we can get replacements for those again, hopefully in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody have any other questions first? All right, Dr. Nipper, go ahead. You can either-
Let me try again.
Are you going to ask to pull back the motion, or are you going to ask to amend?
No, I move to amend the, the current motion to purchase the buses for two hundred and twenty thousand dollars and not include the trade. And I kind of agree with Ashley's comments earlier. I donated a car, and just to give you an idea of the relative meaninglessness of this offer, I donated a two thousand and four Subaru station wagon and got five hundred and fifty dollars for it. Now, that car was in a lot worse condition than these buses. So this estimate, the trade-in allowance, I think is, as Ashley mentioned earlier, is sort of out of line with my expectations.
Tina, no, who's, who's the person approved it? Patty, you probably approved it.
Patty, would you be agreeable to just make something, withdraw the motion, and whoever made the second, then Dr. Nipper's motion would simply be the original motion to do it without the trade?
We could do it either way, and I don't think it makes any difference. But yeah, okay, whatever, whatever's the pleasure of the committee.
Go ahead.
I would like to withdraw ten point two, the school bid award.
All right, so withdraw the motion that we originally had on the two hundred and twenty thousand with one thousand dollar thing. And now we have a motion, new motion on the table. I need a second and then a vote to approve it.
Second.
All right, so now the new motion. Does anybody have any additional comments in regards to removing the thousand dollar bid or trade-in?
Just for, for our, our secretary, I want to make sure that we're clear on the motion. So the amended motion is to approve the two twenty-
Purchase the buses for the two twenty, but not accept the trade allowance.
Correct.
Correct.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes, the new amended motion passes. We're going to move on to ten point three.
I would like to make a motion and combine ten point three through ten point seven.
I have a motion and a second to combine ten point three to ten point seven. Do I have any comments or questions?
I do have a comment. I would like to have stand up our new Director of Communications Specialist and congratulate you and welcome aboard. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I'm going to have one. Our new person, would you come up here for a quick second and let the public know your intentions on creating this new Instagram and such, what your thoughts are and vision for this coming year?
I think I got this right. Yeah. Hi, everyone. I've been able to meet most of you, and I interviewed with the three gentlemen right here. But for those of you who I have not met yet, my name is Danielle, and I am the new Communication Specialist for the district. My intention and hope to create the district Instagram and YouTube channel, it's just another platform to promote the positive student and staff academic achievements, athletic accomplishments, and extracurricular accomplishments as well. And I'm sure, as most of you know, we already have a district Facebook page and a Twitter account, which I also hope to enhance a little bit and post more the daily academic achievements that our students are doing. So hopefully you let me create the Instagram and YouTube so I can do all of that.
All right, so I do have a question, and I wanted to make sure if the public heard this, that's why I asked. Are you going to be in charge of the district website?
Yes, updating the content and photos.
I know it's your first night, but can we make, can we, can we make sure that we have all the items on it accurate in time for school to start, please?
Sure, that's a big task, but I got it.
Thank you.
Don't worry.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. We move on to action items education.
I'd like to make a motion, under education, we approve eleven point one and eleven point two.
I have a motion and a second to approve eleven point one and eleven point two. Does anybody have any comments or questions? All right, I'm going to ask. The Ed Opt, do we have sort of any kind of, because it's a cyber thing, and I know we talked about it before, but if we could just do a real quick refresh for the public so they understand what we're talking about and that, because that's relatively new for this year.
Absolutely. So this motion is to approve a new partnership with Ed Options Academy. Ed Option Academy is one of the, one of several third-party vendors for virtual cyber education. Currently in the district, we have a number of students that are participating in cyber programs, either within the district, with a BVA, or outside of the district. We are recommending adding Ed Options Academy because it is a more cost-effective provider. It provides instruction, live instruction from teachers, which we do not have with our current provider, and it also provides additional special education support for students that we don't have with our current provider. So for those reasons, we are, we are recommending approval- Uh, so for those reasons, we are, we are recommending approval of this contract to add, uh, we're not displacing BVA at this point. We're simply adding, EdOptions Academy, it gives us a better uh palette of options for our students and it gives us uh another option for our students that are currently in out-of-district cyber placements uh that might be more attractive to help bring them back to the district.
Thank you. Do we have any comments, any additional comments? Hearing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes, move on to Action Homes Policy.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve policies 12.1.
I have a motion a second to approve policy 12.1, which is 800. Anybody have any comments or questions? Hearing, we fixed, it's fixed. And hearing any, anything else? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Do we have a update for the JOC, Patty?
We actually met last night. Our meetings are getting longer and longer every night. It used to be like 10, 15 minutes, now we're like an hour and 15. But um great discussion. The Western Center, an update, the Western Center Personnel Committee continues to work towards a settlement with the teachers for the union contract. Um, the Western Center has never started a school without a contract and does not see any problems with the start of the school, of opening day, I should say. So um that's pretty important. They continue to work and keep the momentum going, so. Uh, Mr. Levingood, who's our director, discusses safety and mental health grant. I believe that's Act 55, is that the Act 55? The grant which we, we just found out about, which we will be applying for, is due August 31st. So we had a lot of time to get this one written, so um we will be applying for it. The CTCs across the state will each receive $70,000 for safety and security and $70,000 for mental health under the governor's new budget this year. Turning the wheels a little bit, uh, we had an auction. It came to the board's um knowledge that we had a barn, a barn, and then we had a big, huge garage full, I mean full, from bottom to top of stuff. I mean, everything from every program. So we decided, you know, back before the end of school, we would get an auction to go out, hire somebody to come out, put it online. There were 66 pages of items for bid. It ended last week, so last night we made $140,000, uh, which we will receive 112, which was a success. Uh, the tiny house, I don't know if a lot of you remember the tiny house. We sold that for 32,000, which was a success. People came from all over, from New York, New Jersey. The stories just with the directors telling us, people coming with their carts, like the ragabond trucks, just trying to get the stuff out. And they were just like, get off our property, go take it, get off. So kudos to our principal, Mark, and our director, Dave, who really, really did an amazing job. There's only seven items out of the 61 pages that are left. And the one that hit me was a hospital bed. Nobody wanted the hospital bed, which was for the nursing program. So, so that was wonderful that um, and we think we're gonna do this every other year. Just take old stuff that we have, get somebody from the outside that comes in, because they have a following, these auctioneers. So they, they know when they put them on the website, these people like come from everywhere. I mean, there was plates, cups, forks, spoons, I mean, everything. So that was wonderful. Um, we did have a presentation from an ICS firm. Under no contract, and it didn't cost us anything, we asked them to come in and assess our building. Now, the building renovation was in 2010 and it's getting close to 12 years now and things are starting to fall apart. And I've always have said, we do not have a capital fund at the Western Center. So now we're gonna have to get together and establish a committee because we have a list of things like chillers, boilers, I mean, things that are gonna need to be repaired. And since we don't have a capital fund, it comes back to the home school to say, we have to come to you and say, okay, well, we need this money now. So I think the best thing to do, because I chair over there, is establish a facilities committee because we don't have a facilities department there and maybe get these fellas to come to our facilities meeting and explain it there because it would take a lot to do here at our board meetings. And um I think that's more of a committee item, but um there's a lot of repairs that has to be done over there. So we have like one air conditioner's not even working now. And it just came down to nobody really overseeing it. You know, I know we had a change of hands in directors, but they're, um, it's really neglect is what it comes down to. No, no maintenance repair, no following up, just like what we, we do here. We have a timeline on what needs to be repaired, what's essential, what's not. So I think in the best interest of the three sending schools is if we get together and we just establish a committee for facilities to go over this, because this is gonna be like a five to 10-year plan. And then you gotta keep in mind that we changed superintendents of records, we changed JOC members. So it's, it's so hard over there to um keep the next team coming in knowing what, what happened. Mark's actually the one who keeps, he's a historian over there.
I was, I guess I'm the only institutional history at this point. I was questioned as to why there wasn't a capital reserve fund or a maintenance fund. And um I, I say this as an editorial comment because we represent Springford, we represent Potsgrove, I represent the JOC. And when the controversy started in 2008, I recused myself because you have to remember that the funding formula is different for capital investment than it is for operations. And the difference is for capital is you take the districts, the three districts' assessments, you add them up and you take it by percentage. So, you know, I'm not speaking out of school now, Springford has the highest assessment. So they balked because they owed more than the other districts because the attendance figures come out to a different formula, which is your operations and your everyday operating budget. And um last night, I mean, I mentioned it and I think there's gonna have to be discussion because last time there was a fair amount of contention. Uh, Springford actually withdrew from the center. I won't get into the efficacy of that or I thought that would end, but um it ultimately got compromised. But at that time, the board, and remember with the Western Center, the board is the 27 board members who are at the sending districts. You have the joint operating committee and they go on for years and, you know, we have three members there and, you know, they generally operate the school. But when it comes to certain issues, it takes the board or 27 members. And last time there were a number of conventions, so the, I guess I'll call it the proverbial elephant, elephant in the room is, it's easy to say, we want a capital fund, but everybody has to understand under the current formula, you do it on assessment. And last time, ultimately, there was a compromise where there was a hybrid between uh FTEs, you know, the, the teaching, uh, the number of students and the assessment. There was a blended rate. But that was only a one-time understanding. So right now, if, if everybody has to pay for the capital, it's gonna be done on assessment. And so I don't know where that ends. You know, we'll have to see what some of the other districts say. And so that's where we are. And the other thing is, capital reserve funds for CTCs are limited. You have to do it over five years and the money has to be spent within five years of the first contribution. So there's, I suggested last night that we're, and again, I'm not looking for discussion, I'm glad to do it, but we're in the very early stages because there's a number of issues that have to be resolved. First you have the issue of what Patty suggested is, what are the improvements? And the, in the company last night that was a consultant presented a report, and you've seen such reports. And it's, it's a fair amount of money and probably needed over the next 10 years because you have a 12-year-old building. So to back up, I responded by saying, it really, you know, wasn't, the difficulty at the time was, it was difficult enough to settle the capital contribution in 2010. And now we have to pay the piper in the sense that at that time the building was new. The, the board discussed a capital reserve fund. It wasn't like it was ignored, but they couldn't agree on the contributions. Now we're 12 years into it and, you know, I, I guess what I heard last night, when you get to 20, 25 years, you're talking about chillers and boilers and major capital improvements. So that's where we are. Patty, as the chair lady, is starting that discussion as to what we need to get done, how we're gonna do it. And ultimately, it will come back here in some form or fashion to talk about how we're going to make the contributions of the three sending districts. I hope that made some sense.
No.
Yeah, I just wanted to make everybody aware because I knew it was coming. But um I want Potsgrove to all be involved in that in some. So there was a presentation last night and if we can schedule it at one of our facilities meetings, we can get that presentation to us. And maybe I could get the, the director over there to come, explain more on. But he has to just get together and kind of figure out what's first, what's second, what's, you know, what's priority first, priority second. But I just feel an obligation to let you guys know that this is something I've been saying all along, that unfortunately, the building was renovated in, you know, 12 years ago. And we, everybody always thought, ah, the kids will fix it, the kids will fix it, you know? But, but yeah, that's what some people do say, yeah. But, but it's a teaching school and it's a safety hazard to have these kids do this. But um, but it's gonna cost some money down the road to get it where it needs to be. Any questions with my report?
I actually have one.
Sure.
So, um, what is being done with the cash that was made off of the sale?
Actually, that's all taken consideration, like that, that is possible, that we could actually put, we made that $112,000, that could go towards it. You know, we're looking at all the other things that need to be done, like we could use that. So that money is definitely gonna be used, you know, whenever, yeah.
Presentation indicated there were some, if I may, some short-term needs. Uh, and the experts suggested that with a chiller, you know, you maintain the life longer by keeping it from leaking and maintaining. And there's certain issues now, there's leaks and things and what I'll call short-term maintenance. And that was the intention of the JOC last night, to spend that money on this short-term maintenance. Uh, and hopefully that would, to a very limited extent, save some long-term capital.
And this is Joe.
Oh, go ahead, Joe.
Uh, Patty, that was an excellent summarization from last night. Yes, Patty summarized it really, really well. So um that's where we stand over at the Western Center. That was a very good, like I said, some, summarization of all the long-term. Uh, the building's now 12 and 12 years old and getting, machinery's getting older, the, the boilers are getting older, everything's getting older. We really need to think about uh what we want to do to contribute now instead of if we contribute a little bit now and a little bit next year and a little bit next, it's better than taking a big million-dollar hit or $2 million hit maybe down the road. So great job, Patty, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you, Patty. We're gonna move on to athletics report.
Uh, we met on August the 9th and part of the focus was Adventure Grove, which is the inclusive playground. We went to the school district and we looked at our options on moving our playground somewhere. What could the school offer us to put the playground on our facilities? Like, how would that work? Because right now we need to find a place to, we're, we're floating, we have everything ready to go, but we need a place to land. So um, so the discussion, I think, was very good. I, I thank everybody for coming out to support us. I mean, we've been working on this since, what, 2019, isn't it? And um it's gonna happen, but we just don't know where yet. So we're looking at all of our options and pretty much that was the discussion um for our athletic co-curricular meeting. Sound right, Steve? Yep, okay. And any questions on that? Okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Patty. So we're gonna move on to new business. I'm just gonna run around, Dr. Nipper. I mean, Dr. Finney, Dr. Nipper's way over there. Tina?
Nothing for me.
Patty?
We tried to find something positive. I'd just like to wish everybody an amazing, great year. You know, the kids are excited, parents are excited to get them out of the house and then get back to school. I'd just like to thank the teachers, administration, staff, parents, and students altogether. It's gonna be a great year, I can feel it. I mean, we've been through so much, so I just wish everybody the best.
I'm gonna go to you, Joe, since you're usually on the right-hand side of Patty.
Um, I have nothing for this evening. I apologize, I couldn't make it, long day today, so next time in person.
Now, Dr. Nipper. Any new business?
Yeah, I attended last Friday a play that went on and you're, some of you are aware of this, at the high school called Star Mites. And um the only reason I mention it is apparently this was a summer production started by a, a large number of our students who have resumes from Beauty and the Beast and other past plays. And they put on a play this summer. And our administration did participate. And the reason I'm mentioning it is because I happened to bump into, literally bump into, one of the school directors from Pottstown. And uh this was a joint production from Pottstown, several of the other schools, and us. And they used our facilities. And the director mentioned to me, uh, complimented me on the effort of the administration and the administrators who got special acknowledgement here. So I just want to acknowledge that uh our team deserves a lot of credit for work that I think back in June when summer started, they didn't know they were gonna be doing. So I think this was a, a good effort for our part and it's good to help us get word out to some of the adjoining districts about the good things that are going on here. Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing, Ashley? All right, I do have two items. First one, I did receive recently, like this morning, a couple of comments. We have some type of facilitator is not here, she's not here. A bus or something that's kind of dilapidated over by Lower Potsgrove that some community members are concerned because there's a door missing on this bus and people can go in and out of it. That, to me, would be a hazard. It's sitting over on Lower Potsgrove supposedly.
I'm looking at it, no, no.
It's a truck, it's a maybe it's a truck.
Oh, that, that's been sold, waiting for someone to come by.
The only thing is, we probably don't want it there too long because it is probably a hazard. Good. Second thing, um, I know we had a change obviously with Kate leaving and everything like that and Policy Committee didn't have a chance to do really much at all over the summer and the summer was relatively short, it seemed. Uh, where are we with the, the diversity and exclusion or inclusion? Not exclusion, inclusion group?
Uh, so to provide you a quick update on that, when last we discussed that policy and the formation of a diversity, equity, and inclusion committee, we, uh, we have a list of names of people who are interested and that is something that we'll be working to schedule a meeting uh very shortly. Our new Director of Public Services, Dr. Anne Marie Lucas, is on board and she started today is, Dr. Lucas, what day is it?
Day six.
Day six. So it is on our agenda to get that meeting scheduled and to move forward with that important work.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that, obviously, we had many people in the public that were very interested in something like this. We want to make sure we're not going to forget that particular item. I do not have anything else. Do we have any other judicial public comment? Go ahead, Joe.
Over a period of years, how are we positioning it at this point to make it more appealing to those students that we don't yet have?
Joe, I'm going to, what I'm going to ask is, I will definitely answer those questions, but if you can come up after the meeting, we'll answer all those questions for you. Do you have any comment?
No.
All right, we'll get to your questions, of course, after the meeting.
Thank you.
All right, do I have any other public comment? Dr., Mr. Rossi, come on up. I know, but you have to state your name and everything for the record. State name.
John Rossi, Lower Potsgrove. I should know the answer to this, Patty. Does the Western Center not have a maintenance department?
Comment?
Well, you can get it back to me later, or I'm just throwing it out there. My comment is, a facility that size should have a maintenance department that every day, you know my background, 20 years-plus years in the school district maintenance department, should have a maintenance department walking through that building and saying, here's a leak, air conditioner doesn't work, lights are out, this is out. There should be a report done every day of the maintenance department stating what's wrong. So like we said, we don't have a large bill. We can do these things as they break, instead of hiring an electrician to change 40 light bulbs and 60 light ballasts, because I don't think all the lights there are LED. We can't these things, get a handle on them. It's my comment. My comment is, we should have a system, since we're paying into this Western Center, that's not going to put a hole in our pocket every five, six, seven years. Can be done over every day. And it just chips out of the budget, you know? We need to fix this, we need to fix that. That's my comment. That needs to be looked at. We can solve the problem real easy for not having a big bill. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rossi. Do we have anybody online? All right, hearing nothing? I just need a motion for adjournment then.
Second.
Second, meeting adjourned.